And with that, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now will you please call the roll?
Chairman Bray is present, Vice Chairman Barnes is present, Commissioner Kish is present, Commissioner Keys is present, Commissioner Maloney is present, Commissioner Walters is present, and Commissioner Steiner is present. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. With that, the minutes have been provided to the commissioners and are online. And with that, I will take a motion to approve the minutes from October 11th, 2017.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Maloney, to approve the October 11th minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Are there any non-agenda items that someone would like to address? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six. This is the disclosure of ex parte communication by any of the commissioners. Alright. With permission of my fellow commissioners, and as long as there is no objection from the audience, typically we will move into old business, and we do have an item there tonight. But at the prerogative of the chairman, I'd like to move it to the end of the meeting so that we can better serve our customers and then the commission could take care of business later. Is there any objection from the audience or any of the commission members? Alright. With that, we'll move into new business, and I will open the hearing on the use permit for a drive-through. And presenting tonight is Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Commission members, we have a use permit for you tonight. This is the parcel here. We're located in the Cotton Flower Marketplace. And that commercial center is located here along the west side of Cotton Lane, south of Yuma Road. Existing development within that center is the LA Fitness right here. The Bahama Bucks here is proposed here. This parcel here is the proposed Federico's Restaurant that the commission just recently saw. To the south, we have the Moose Lodge facility, and this is single-family development within Cotton Flower. And then this here is Cotton Lane. Eventually, you see this wide area here, eventually the 303 freeway proposal comes down this alignment. This is the site plan for the restaurant right here. It's about a little over 2,000 square feet. The drive-through lane here wraps around on the west side, comes around the south, and exits here. This is the drive-through window here. They have all this area here identified as their parking area, so they're showing more than adequate amount of parking. The length of the queuing lane, and with all of this drive aisle here, looking at the queuing or the stacking for vehicles, we will have no impact to any of our public streets. They have adequate space for queuing. This right here is something I should point out. This is the speaker box here, menu board. It actually is over here, this area. I point that out because with the speaker box, we usually wouldn't want that facing a single-family residential. So actually, it's over here facing into the center. And being that this is a preliminary site plan, we'll correct that with the site plan once before that gets approved. And this is the proposed elevations that they want to use. They've mixed in some of their corporate elements along with colors and materials taken from the design guidelines for the Cotton Flower Marketplace. Neighborhood meeting, we had that last week, November 1st. Postcards were mailed to all property owners within 500 feet of the site. We did not have anyone from the public attend the citizen review meeting. For the public hearings, before the commission and council, we posted the property, sent out the postcards again to the property owners within 500 feet, and placed a legal ad in the paper. To date, staff has not received any public inquiries on this use permit. With that, we do find it, the use permit is compatible with the surrounding area, and we are recommending approval subject to the four stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, as is the applicant. He's here as well.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody have any questions for staff at this time? Mr. Steiner?
Yeah, Steve, on the, could you go back to the, yeah, that one? The drive-through comes out on the south side where the pickup window is, and then empties out into this area, and they have to head north in order to exit this property? Or is there a drive right in there? They can exit straight out on the cotton?
Mr. Chair, commission members, this is the area of the exit, about here. And you can go north into the center, patronize other uses, and then exit. This exit here will remain eventually, ultimately, assuming a frontage road or some kind of access like that.
So they can exit out through that road onto Cotton?
Yes, sir. In interim, definitely, they'll be able to use that.
Any other questions for staff? The applicant is here. Would the applicant wish to address the commission at this time? Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
No.
Seeing none. Alright. Do we have any speakers' cards on this issue? Okay. With that, then, I will close the public hearing and take a motion.
I will move to approve item 1730000005.
A second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Barnes, seconded by Commissioner Kish, to approve the use permit for the drive-through. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move into item 8.2, and this is a rezoning from the agriculture zoning district to a final planned area development zoning district. And with that, I will open the public hearing and ask Steve to present again.
With this project, we're looking at a rezoning of about one acre here. And here we're at Thomas Road to 303, Cotton Lane, again. And the property is currently developed with APS substation. What APS, what their future plans are, is to expand onto this area here, and then eventually decommission this site. What we have is this property, just this piece here, and that's right here, is zoned agricultural. And the expansion property around it is zoned PAD. It's part of the Palm Valley 303 PAD. So what the thought was, let's rezone this property to PAD to match the surrounding area, so APS now will have a consistent zoning for their facility. Why they need to do this is because the substation, what the records show is it's been in existence for a while. It looks like since the late 60s, the substation was developed. City annexed the property in 1989 and gave it a designation of agricultural, AG. Substation in an agricultural zone requires a use permit. With the age of the substation, there was no record of a use permit, so what it's considered is a non-conforming use in agricultural zone. And with that non-conforming status, it cannot be modified or changed any. So because APS, their ultimate plans are to modify the site, expand onto the adjoining property, they need to rezone it to a district that would allow a substation. And with the PV 303, we have industrial proposed here, commercial here. They would just change this to PAD commercial. So their existing ag piece with the existing substation will be zoned commercial just to match this. The non-conforming status will go away. They can now continue their plans to expand. And this is the overall Palm Valley 303 development. And here we are right down in here. And what ultimately, this shows the future condition. The substation, all of this APS property will be zoned in this orange color, which is the commercial. And again, we have substations, public facilities as a permitted use in commercial. So again, we no longer have that non-conforming status. And this was the site plan provided by APS. This is Thomas here, Cotton. This square here represents the existing area. And what you can see here surrounding it is that adjoining area that they want to expand into. The new substation will be in this area here. And when they get that online, eventually this one will be decommissioned. And they're saying it's probably about 2019 or so when they'll have this up, and then this one will be removed. Because it's a public hearing, we did notice the property mailing to surrounding property owners, the legal ad, and the postcard, and the posting of the property. To date, staff has not received any inquiries on this project. We do find the rezoning to go to commercial is consistent with the general plan. It will be compatible with the surrounding area. So we are recommending approval subject to the one stipulation that was found in ordinance number 1713-71. But that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Steve? Yes?
Steve, on this slide, the future substation overlaps a little with the existing substation. Is that correct?
Yes, it does. This is the existing here.
Okay. If that weren't the case, would rezoning be necessary to simply decommission the substation? I'm just curious.
Mr. Chair, commission members, with the non-conforming status, there's no work to it, so I would assume they would have to at least rezone it to get it to where they could work on it.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve at this time? Is APS here tonight? Would you wish to address the commission, or? Would you, do you wish to address the commission? Any other questions? Alright, do we have any speakers' cards on this issue? Alright, with that, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 172000006.
I second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Keys, to approve the rezoning. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We will move into agenda item 8.3. This is the Hudson Commons PAD Amendment. I will open the public hearing, and Alex will present on this one.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you. This item is a PAD amendment for the Hudson Commons Plan Area Development. If you recall, Hudson Commons was approved January in 2016. And then if you also recall, March of 2017, staff came forward and removed the city center gateway overlay district. The proposal, the PAD amendment proposal makes changes only to the provisions in the multifamily district, so that's just that red box outlined on the screen. The proposal makes amendments to two pages on the text. Page 21 eliminates that statement regarding the city center gateway overlay district since it is no longer in place. And then that fourth bullet adds a provision that private patios are permitted within the western perimeter, which is up against the single-family residential, as you can see on this slide. Page 45 reiterates that private patios provision, and makes a footnote allowing the backyard patio to be counted towards the setback on the western side. So what that would look like, Hudson Commons, the multifamily area, they are proposing a single-story bungalow-style apartments, so similar to what you've seen with the Villa and some of the other projects that have come for you recently. They do all have private backyards, and there's 183 units total. So that, with the, with their proposal to do single-story units and having that backyard type of feel, we see no issues with the backyard being included as that 20-foot landscape buffer. Public notices were properly given. We did have a neighborhood meeting on September 27th. No one from the public attended this meeting. Staff and the applicant did receive a few phone calls, just asking questions about what the project meant. And they did express a little concern about the traffic. However, they were made aware that this amendment does not change the zoning of the property, and were satisfied with the answer and with the proposal moving forward. Oops, ran out of slides. So therefore, staff recommends approval of the amendment. There are no stipulations that we found necessary.
Thank you, Alex. Does anybody have any questions for Alex at this time? Mr. Steiner?
Alex, there's 16 properties along that western wall. Did any of them have any outdoor access, any patio at all in there? Or are these going to be amended so they can add the patios to this?
Chairman Bray, members of the commission, I, I'm sorry, well, I don't, I'm not understanding your question. The properties on the west side of that boundary, there are currently no single-family residents built yet. It's undeveloped land. Their backyards will, but the property line of the multifamily uses, and have the backyard patio.
So you're amending it to add the patio to these? They weren't before.
The landscape setback provision are usually put in place for multifamily garden-style apartments, or multi-story, excuse me, multi-level garden-style apartments. So they don't typically have the backyard patio style that Hudson Commons is proposing. So... So the landscape setback would have been there, but there might have been parking in between the landscape setback, the parking, and then units.
Okay, very good.
Hopefully that answers.
No, you did it. You got it.
Any other questions for Alex? Is the applicant here tonight?
He is here.
Do you wish to address the commission?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Mark Ready with LVA. We're the applicant for the project. First off, I want to thank you for rearranging your agenda. I know, I know, I speak for all of our, all of your customers. We appreciate that very much. I think Alex did a good job of presenting the case before you today. I would just reiterate, we actually have a builder for the product right now. The land is vacant. We're in the process of going through the site plan review process right now. So in answering your question, this product, you've probably seen it in other areas around the valley. I know you're doing at least one in the city right now, maybe a couple. They're built with and without private patios. Our client is trying to do all patios, basically private backyards in all of the units, which is an added benefit for the residents that live there. When the PAD was first developed, the multifamily component, we were envisioning a more traditional garden-style apartment where you've got perimeter setbacks, and you've got parking, and other things in between the buildings and the perimeter of the property line. When we started developing this site plan, we realized that there was a provision in the regulations that was preventing us from having those private patios, even though the intent was to keep the buildings set back 30 feet. And so as long as we provided landscaping within those private patios, it meets the intent of the code. So it's really just a technicality that we're cleaning up in the PAD to ensure that we can put the walls for those patios within that 20-foot landscape setback. And so you can see along that western perimeter, those green areas, those are all those private yards within the project. As Ms. Listinsky said, we've received no opposition. We are in the process of processing the site plan, so we're running this concurrent. So we're hoping with support of the commission and approval of the council later this month, we will get our site plan approved hopefully in December or January, and we'll start construction immediately after that. So we're moving forward as quickly as we can to get this project going. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there any speakers' cards for anybody from the public on this issue? Alright, with that, I will close the public hearing and take a motion on Hudson Commons.
Chairman, I motion to approve case number 17-210-00005.
I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Keys, seconded by Commissioner Maloney, to approve Hudson Commons PAD amendment. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.4, this is the amendment to parcel 12 of the Goodyear Plan Regional Center Planned Area Development. And Steve will present on that, and I will open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, commission members, the next two items concern the same parcel here. This one, the first one's PAD amendment, and the next one's a preliminary plat. What I was hoping to do is provide one overall presentation, and then the commission can take separate action, if that would be okay with the commission. I can go ahead and do that.
Let's proceed that way, Steve, please.
Thank you. This is the parcel here. We have Pebble Creek Parkway, Virginia here. Existing assisted living facility right here. To the west and wrapping around the north, Pebble Creek. This is the RID Canal coming here down along the east. And then this is the Rio Paseo neighborhood right here. And here, right here in the corner, we have an existing APS substation. The property is currently planned area development with an underlying designation of court home. And that PAD was approved back in 2001. What the applicant would like to do would be to amend this within the PAD to go from court home to single-family. And what that would look like, here is the original PAD plan. Here's the parcel here. And this is the court home designation right here. And what the plan would be, just change that designation to go from the higher-density court home to the lower-density, single-family designation. And their plan includes 52 single-family lots. And this would be the basic layout of the subdivision that you will see with the preliminary plat. Lot sizes are 46 feet wide by 110 feet deep. And about 30% of the project is open space. They will have an open view fence here along the entire length of the RID Canal. But they will have a sidewalk here with a connection to that existing trail that runs south along Pebble Creek. Then they'll also have some grass areas, and then some amenities here in their open space areas. For this development, the applicant will keep all the homes on these lots here that's just south of Pebble Creek. These will all be single-story homes right here. And then all those homes along Pebble Creek Parkway, those will also be all single-story homes. I had a neighborhood meeting on October 4th. We did not have anyone from the public attend. We did mail out postcards to all the property owners within 500 feet of the property, so that did include Pebble Creek and the Rio Paseo neighborhoods. We also mailed that to the HOAs for both neighborhoods. Notice for the public hearing, we did post the property, send out the legal ad, and the postcards again. To date, we have not received any inquiries from the public on this project. And one thing, Mr. Chairman, I should point out, the applicant had reminded me that for the school district, they will be making the donation to the school district. Staff report calls out, I think, $625. The applicant told me it's actually $1,000. It'll be $700 to the elementary school and $300 to the high school district. So I wanted to make sure I pointed that out. It's a higher amount than what's listed in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, we find it consistent, the change from the court home to the single-family. We do find it consistent with the general plan. It is compatible with the surrounding area. And we are recommending approval subject to the 10 stipulations in the draft of ordinance 17-1374 that was included with the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, staff's available for questions. I know the applicant is here, and they have a short PowerPoint that they would like to provide.
Is there any questions for Steve at this time? Mr. Steiner?
Steve, how many ins and outs do we have on this particular property?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, thank you for asking. We have one that will be for public use, and that is right here. This here will be an emergency access for emergency use only. So no public use will be through here.
Has, has this been, what am I looking for here? Has this been approved by fire and police as being safe with just one in and out?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, with the provision of this emergency access here, yes, they are okay with the concept, because this will be the second point of access. The actual technical details will be at final plat and construction plans. They'll actually then show how they're building it, surface width and all that. But the concept, the location, the general width, that has been approved. Yes, sir.
Is there any future plans on adding another in-out instead of just that fire lane?
No, sir, given... Given this is an opening here for a median, you can have the full turning movements. You have existing driveways into the substation, and you'll have this emergency here. There just wasn't room for another full access point for the subdivision. So they have the one that will serve the 52 lots. Having just one would not have been consistent with our standards, but because they are providing a second point here, it does become consistent now.
That was acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Walters, do you have a question?
Steve, thank you for the presentation. My question is about lots 1 through 6. I can't tell from the drawings. Maybe you could educate me. Are those homes going to sit closer to Pebble Creek than, for example, the homes to the north or the homes to the west? Right. I'm wondering if they are going to sit closer to Pebble Creek than the comparative homes to the north and to the west.
Just for clarification, you're referring to the existing homes in Pebble Creek subdivision to the north. Is that correct?
Right, and across the street as well, Mr. Baker. I'm just wondering, from the way it's drawn, it almost looks like they're going to be quite up closer to Pebble Creek Parkway, and I'm just wondering... quite up closer to Pebble Creek Parkway, and I'm just wondering, one clarification on that.
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, the second presentation for this one, I have the plat on there, so if that one should come up, I can, we can look at actual more detailed drawing.
Okay, let's do it.
But the overall answer is yes, they will be closer than the ones to the north.
Steve, just a quick question. What's a setback from Pebble Creek 2 that, the homes 1 through 6 that Commissioner Walters was asking?
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, offhand, I do not remember, but I'm hoping to bring up, Flaney can bring up the second presentation for these projects, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Steve, do you want to move into the second one, and then if the applicant wants to present, they can present on everything as well, and then we'll go back and do, does that work for you?
Mr. Chairman?
You want to present on the second parcel as well, or the second, the preliminary plat?
Mr. Chairman, I can. This is the preliminary plat right here, and these are the lots right here. This is the curb line here, and I don't know if there's the distance here. Unfortunately, I cannot read that. The number that makes sense, or 26 feet?
Mr. Chairman, maybe the applicant might have a copy of the plat when they come up to speak and could put it on Elmo so we could zoom in on that, maybe.
Perfect. Good suggestion, Chris. I fell asleep there for a minute. Mr. Earl, would you like to cut, do you guys have that? You're looking for it.
20.
This is the distance, looks like it's almost 20, little over 20 feet in between the right-of-way line and the back wall. And then you have the 75 feet of the right-of-way here, taking it about here.
Commissioner Steiner, Commissioner Walters, does that satisfy your question?
It does, thank you.
Do you have more about the setback?
Okay. Any other questions for Steve at this time? With that, if, Mr. Earl, you would like to present to the commission on all of this, and then we'll approve it in chunks, feel free to do so.
Good evening. For your record, I'm Taylor Earl with Earl Curly and Lagarde. We're at 3101 North Central Avenue. I think our presentation's being pulled up here by the AV queen in the back. Yeah, there it is. So I'll try not to tread over the same ground that Steve did for the sake of time, but I can certainly answer any questions that you wish to direct to me. So what I do with this slide is just showing a little bit of what Steve did, but also taking it from a slightly different angle. So here is the existing land use allocation that's in the Goodyear PRC, but this shows what happened to the site. So let me go back one second. There it is currently, or as it was approved. And then what happened is the assisted living facility came in and take off the bottom portion of that. And actually preceding that, the SRP piece came in and took off that top left corner. And so what you're left with is a very odd-shaped parcel. It's essentially the oddest part of the whole parcel, but that's all you're left with. So you had this nice clean, kind of cleaner square at the bottom, they took that off, and then took off the top left corner. And so you're left with this sloping on the east, which obviously is difficult when you're putting square lots into that type of configuration, taking out the top left corner. So it's a site that typically you'd see things like variances come through, it'd be a hardship because that's a classic and a weird-shaped parcel. It's one of the reasons, I think, that this parcel's been passed over, and you look at all the single-family development that's occurred, and it's really just been the sort of leftover piece that's never really gone anywhere for years. And so what KB is able to do here is really, I think, really great. And I'll show you all the different features they've been able to put in, but I think they've taken a difficult site and made something really special out of it. So again, this is the site plan that we have, and I'll just kind of highlight a few things with this. Number one is because of the cul-de-sacs that we have, we have a lot of opportunity for a lot of premium lots. So because we don't have a lot of cut-through traffic, people getting east of your home, you have a lot of lots that really don't have a whole lot of pass-through traffic. And so you have a lot of sort of, call them cul-de-sac conditions for a lot of the lots. And the other thing is because this doesn't have a lot of access between communities, you don't have somebody saying, "Well, it's a little easier for me to come off Pebble Creek and get all the way to my subdivision," which is too over. So you have really just your lot. You have 52 lots, and that's all the traffic that you have. Nobody cutting through to go to the north or to the east. Now, those are just the circumstances of where we're located, right? Because of the configuration, the east and north. And that does somewhat answer Commissioner Steiner's question of why only one point of access, and is that working? And we did want to make sure the fire and police were comfortable with that. So that's why that emergency access point got put in, because there's really not a whole lot of options for us to put it really anywhere else. And so not only would that be allowed to be used by police, fire, medical, but also if, for some reason, our own entrance got blocked or there was an accident, that could be used for residents as well under emergency circumstances. Under the approval that's existing today, 20% plus or minus is what the open space requirement is, and we're able to put in 30%. So that's well over the amount that you normally would see in a subdivision. So we have a lot of open space, so they've utilized that fact that we are on that awkward curve, and they've turned it into their central amenity areas, big grass, open space, landscaping there to the south. So we've really well utilized the awkwardness of the shape and turned it into a really nice open space. And what that does, and we'll get to this in a little bit, but it allows all of these folks here to have kind of the benefit because it'll be view fencing all the way across here. So rather than backing up to homes or to a block wall, that'll all be open for these folks here. And there's cul-de-sacs here, they'll be able to see through to the extent they have two-story homes. And so that's a feature that not only benefits our folks, but it goes beyond as well. And then I'm zooming in just a little bit to show you some of the open space, so we'll start with the slide on the bottom left, just to give you a sense of what our amenity package would have. We're putting in the Ramada barbecue picnic tables, tot lots, some of the grassy area around there. And then the northeast corner or the southeast slide, bottom right, we have just a big grassy area. But I'm also highlighting what Steve pointed out, which is that you have this great sidewalk, which is going to get you to basically up through here, and so this is that trail corridor. So not only do we have a great amenity that's next to us, we're highlighting it by making sure that people can access it, that it's accessible off of something also that's special in our community. So we link those two amenity areas, and it makes it a really nice community feature that people, that we're highlighting and we're making sure people have convenient access to. In the original approval, these lots were maintained as single-story restricted, and that was important for the neighbors to the north. So we're highlighting here that we're maintaining that. We came in telling staff that we would respect that, and we would ask for it to be replaced back on the case so that those would be restricted to single-story. But in addition to that, we're also taking on all the corner lots. We'll have single-story restrictions placed on them. You have an additional place there, and as we'll zoom in in a minute, but again, if you're living over here, you have the benefit of these nearest lots also going to be single-story restricted. I wanted to highlight here, for the folks to the north, again, a single-story restriction was important to them back then, but I want to highlight just what doing our type of subdivision does to keeping the homes further away. So I'll have to walk through this a little bit, but this is the existing zoning under cluster. You'd have that first row would be at about 60, 69 feet, and that would be single-story. But in a cluster product, you don't have a, well, sometimes it'll be single, sometimes it'll be double. You have a two-story product, just, that's just how they're built. So you would have a definite two-story at 122 and a definite two-story at 167. Let's go over to what we're proposing. That first lot is immediately, the house is immediately slightly further away, still single-story. By the time you get to that second one where you could have a two-story, it might also be single. You're at 224 versus 122, so you're about double the distance. And then if we go to that third one, it's again sort of exponentially getting further and further away. So for these neighbors here to the north, not only are we putting in a single-story like before, but the homes are just that much further away before you might get to a second-story home. And again, there's no guarantee that the homebuyer could choose a single-story as well. Wanted to look at what it looked like to the east as well, and so I had our engineers measure what that looks like. So you can see the measurements that would again go to that first single-story, talking about 150 to, over 200, 250 approximate feet. So we are keeping a really great distance away. So for those folks that have enjoyed the fact that, hey, nothing's been built here for a long time, we're giving them, we think, the best reasonable option here, which is that we're keeping everything really pushed away from them so that they maintain that nice open view off of the canal. This just highlights what we're doing in terms of the view fencing. So this shows view fencing here, where I'm highlighting that view fencing will come all the way down here. There'll be view fencing off of the canal so that people coming along will be able to kind of view into this space. That keeps it safer from a SEPTED point of view. It's also nice if you're walking along it because it opens it up for certain sections. Wanted to talk a little bit about the design enhancements. So we have worked with staff and put in, we had three submittals, and so we worked with staff closely to put in enhancements to the project that would make sure that we were elevating it, elevating the homes, elevating the lots, making sure that there were standard things that all lots would have to have. And so this highlights a few of them. So number one is we have detached sidewalks. So there'll be this landscape tract, and there is requirements on number, a tree and shrubs and ground cover. So you essentially have a tree-lined street as you go down all the way through, and this is something that's, I certainly notice now as I go through projects. And now when I drive in subdivisions, I look at, hey, do they have a detached sidewalk? Do they not? And it makes a huge difference. It really does. It's a huge difference to have that, not only for the pedestrian experience, but as you drive down it as well. And then the forward-living floor plans, what that means is that 80% of our floor plans must have a forward-living component, meaning that the garage is back behind the forward-living. What that does is it de-emphasizes the garage and it emphasizes the home. And so there's requirements for the stagger that must be different between the two. What that does is it allows movement. If you kind of look here at this plotting plan, you'll see the movement that occurs from front to back. And then enhanced driveways with stamped concrete or pavers are, must be standard on all the homes. And then this talks about some of the enhancements on the elevation. So we have to have at least five different floor plans, at least three different elevations per floor plan. You're looking at 15 different homes, which is something you'd see even in a much bigger subdivision with a couple hundred homes. Here, you only have 52, so you're giving a lot of variety in a small amount of lots, meaning that there would be a lot of variety in our subdivision. Three-color combos minimum, enhanced garage doors, and bearing roof elements, and then trim at least on two sides of all the windows. So these are all these little enhancements that when you put them all together, really make the subdivision feel really nice and upgraded. And then I just kind of put them all together. So we've done quite a bit to make sure that we're enhancing the homes, enhancing the subdivision, making it this nice little enclave of 52 homes that we think will really be special, given what it was today. The court home has a little higher density. We're reducing that down a little bit and pushing the homes further away from people, putting in single-story restrictions, all the enhancements to the lots, to the elevations. We think that KB Homes done a lot to make sure that this ends up being a nice project. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we can, if we didn't get satisfactory response on the west side, we can go back to that or ask any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Earl? Commissioner Maloney?
I'm assuming that these are, you know, family developments, and I'm wondering, because of the traffic, existing traffic on Pebble Creek Parkway, school buses. And has any thought been given to, you know, what are we going to do with school buses?
I don't know that we've gotten to that stage. That might be something that comes up in the final plat. I don't know the answer as to whether the school would want to send buses into here or not.
You know, we do have, these will be private streets. It may be that they choose to do it at the bottom right into that parking lot, or maybe a pickup there. It might be the more convenient spot. No, there hasn't. I don't think we've gotten to that stage.
Commissioner Steiner? Is this a gated community?
At this time, we are not proposing a gate. It will have private streets, but we are not proposing a gate at this time.
Any other questions for the applicant or staff? Thank you, Mr. Earl. With that, we're going to go back to the 8.4 is what we'll focus on, which is the planned area development, and this is a public hearing. So is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission? Any speaker's cards? Say none. I'll close the public hearing on the amendment, and I will take a motion on that, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this commission approve case number 17-200-00005.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Walters, seconded by Commissioner Barnes to approve the amendment to parcel 12. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We have already heard agenda item 8.5 from both the staff and the applicant. I'll ask one more time, is there any questions regarding this issue? All right. With that, I will take a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Walters, to approve the preliminary plat for the Goodyear Plan Regional Center. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I will move now to, we will go back to old business at this time. And old business is the zoning ordinance text amendment, and this was a continuation from the last planning meeting. Looks like Alex is going to present on this one?
Correct.
Okay. Because it says Katie here, but if Alex wants to present, it's all right. We'll listen to anybody that'll talk to us. And with that, it is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing.
Chairman, brave members of the commission, thank you. I'm very excited to be presenting this to you tonight. Katie was going to give me a little warm-up speech, but I can take it from here. No, you're good. We're good. I know we've all been really excited about this update, and I'm very, very happy that it's here tonight before you. So this is kind of a little brief look at what we'll be talking about tonight, just kind of how we got here, the new layout change proposed, the new districts, development standards that apply, go through some examples, talk about public participation, and then open it up for some questions and comments and take your feedback. So as we may have mentioned in the work session that we held back in August, the last update to the city's residential zoning district standards was in 2004. And as you've seen with the past couple of amendments, a lot of requirements- And as you've seen with the past couple of amendments, a lot of requests have been for fifty-foot-wide lots, fifty-five, and a lot of deviations from the city's existing standards. The last number that I brought forward to you was thirty-four out of thirty-seven rezoned cases were PADs. I have not updated this number since, so there have been new applications for PAD amendments since that number. And then we held this city council work session on July tenth, and then if you'll recall in August, we sat around the table. So this is a look at the layout change that we're proposing. You can see it's a lot smaller. So the first, Article three dash two dash one, in the original version, you can see each district had its own section. This one, we've grouped them all up for, to make it clear. So in three dash two dash two, we have a list, or I'm sorry, a table that has the permitted uses in it, makes it a lot easier to read rather than going through lists in the existing zoning ordinance as it sits today. Then we have the development standards for, we broke it down by single-family and multifamily, and you can see three-two-four is single-family, three-two-six is multifamily, I'm sorry, three-two-three and three-two-five. And then three-two-four and three-two-six are additional definitions and regulations that we grouped together just for, to make it a clear document. Three dash two dash seven combines a lot of our, a lot of supplemental standards that applied to every district that were being repeated throughout the document, so we made a clean section for that. And just to reiterate, it was a lot of repeated information. It was lengthy and it was not user-friendly. So as we discussed before, we have the three new districts, which are R-one-four, R-one, or for single-family detached, R-one-A is single-family attached, R-one-C is the court home products. And then we did, we are recommending deleting the agricultural preservation district. There's currently no property within the city that zones this district, and staff does not anticipate this district ever being utilized or needed, or one of our existing districts couldn't cover what's necessary in that one. This is the development standards table that's been updated. So you can see I highlighted all of the new districts that we're proposing. And then as we discussed, I think at the work session, we were proposing changing the minimum lot width for the R-one-six district to fifty-five feet, from sixty to fifty-five, and then, which in turn changes the minimum lot area to fifty-five-hundred. The amendment also proposes moving the R-two district. Right now, it's grouped with the multifamily section. R-two is intended for duplexes, so we've moved it into the single-family section as So if you look, I highlighted the front and front-facing garage. The front setback was split up into two descriptions. Historically, we've allowed ten-foot setbacks from two side-facing garages, patios, and livable space, often casitas. So we added the front, we just made that the baseline. Any building area would be ten feet. And then front-facing garage, we left as twenty, because we don't, anything facing, or any garage facing a street should be back twenty. Hopefully that makes sense. So the existing ordinance did not explicitly call out open space in the development standards for single-family districts. It was identified in the PAD section, so what we did was, we just took how the standards sit today and put them into this table, so they're not getting missed at all, or it's very clear for, for the user. And we also did increase the building coverage requirements. This was for essentially a few different reasons. This has been what we've been approving and recommending for approval with the PADs. And it also, if you calculate the setbacks based on the build, or the property lines, it didn't, the numbers didn't calculate correctly, so you can have a, you got a smaller space built into. I'll just show you an example. So this is a lot. You can see the building setback line. This would be the rear yard, so twenty feet, six feet on one side, nine feet on the other. And this dash line shows building coverage maximums. This one was a PAD, so the lot coverage was acceptable. But there's one major reason that we wanted to increase the lot coverage requirements, and that was for homeowners. A lot of times residents would come in and ask for a patio extension, put a casita in the backyard, and building coverage does, does apply to anything with a roof. So they oftentimes were rejected because they were exceeding that building coverage. So this is just ensuring that residents can add to their property. The building setbacks are still being met, but it allows a little bit for more flexibility. So as we discussed in the work session, we are recommending a process for administrative approval of the, of certain deviations if additional design elements are provided. And those two deviations are reduction of lot width by five feet in R-one-six and R-one-four, so that's ultimately allowing a fifty-foot-wide lot and a forty-foot-wide lot. And then another option for a standard deviation would be the total both sides can be reduced to ten feet. And so how this works is by this table. So in the first column, we have the zoning designation listed, and then you can see there's the reduction for R-one-six and R-one-four available. The second column shows minimum lot width, so if we look across the row, in a typical R-one-six lot, the minimum lot width would be fifty-five feet. You'd require fifteen-foot setback on both sides, or total on the both sides. And then it's just there for reference. There aren't any additional elements because this was an existing district, so we didn't want to impose additional requirements. So then if we look at a reduced lot size, you can do the fifty-foot minimum lot width as long as you're providing one amenity element, two connectivity elements, and two streetscape elements. And the same goes for if you want to do an R-one-six with a ten-foot total side setback, you'd have to do those restrictions as well. We also added design elements required for the standard R-one-four district. So even though we are allowing these outright, we still believe that since they are smaller lots, they should be providing additional amenities. And we also did test these numbers out to make sure it was doable, and by our judgment, we believe it is, in the long run, saving time and would make for great communities. So now we'll take a look at the different design elements themselves. The purpose of the amenity element is to create diverse places within a community that are accessible to the surrounding residents, and ultimately, smaller lots require additional amenities since you're taking space from backyards and front yards. So we want to provide for that and within the neighborhood. These are some of the options that can be counted towards the calculation for the deviations. So as I show these, it's important to note that these aren't the requirements, not everyone's going to build an orange monster in every community, but these types of amenities would meet the intent that, of the requirements. The proposed amendment does prescribe some minimum requirements within those, within those groupings, so additional internal park amenities, there are written requirements for what that bare minimum entails. But it also does provide for an opportunity for an applicant to be creative, and if they wanted to do an orange monster, they're welcome to and can build fifty-foot-wide lots. So you'll also notice that in the requirements table, there aren't as many amenity elements required for the new districts or deviated districts. As much as we all would like every amenity within every neighborhood, we do acknowledge that these are not cheap. Large-scale amenities are not cheap to build, so we are trying to, to make it accessible So, sorry, one second.
Very good.
When we worked with council and then when we spoke with you, we established that the priorities of the, you guys' is quality and safety. So as we move through, move through these, we'll kind of tie it back to how we're providing quality neighborhoods and safe neighborhoods. So with amenities, we want to ensure that we're enhancing recreational opportunities by creating community facilities and additional park space. And as far as safety, we're providing additional dedicated recreation space for children and So the next element is the connectivity element, and we believe the purpose is to create an inclusive community that promotes a sense of community and provides walkability and bikeability with easy and quick access to nearby amenities. And some examples, this is not the full list of the, those buckets that we, we've created, but I just pulled a couple that you can see, see on the screen. So infill development, if something's within the general plan growth area or close to an existing amenity, that would get credit. So I pulled Bennett Estates, which didn't have a PAD or deviation, but I thought it was such a good example of infill, infill within Goodyear. Trail system connections, right now, we do currently require that if you're close to a regional trail, you provide connections, but these are mostly applied to public access to trails. So as long as you're making the effort to provide publicly accessible trails, you could get credit for that. And then smaller blocks, this is a screenshot from Agratopia, and the minimum requirement for smaller blocks we put was six hundred and sixty feet, which is the, oh, I didn't even realize I had the measurement on there. It's five hundred and seventy feet shown. So that provides more accessibility, so you're not having to walk as far to get around the neighborhood. And like I said, these are, these aren't the extensive lists, you can see the, all of the options in the provided draft. And then back to those considerations, we think that the, well, the citizen survey results requested increase in walking and biking systems, so that is responding to our community and providing for quality development. And then the other, for safety, we're dispersing traffic, reducing volumes in front of homes, and providing options for emergency response. The next element is the streetscape element, and the purpose there is to create a sense of place and ensure that smaller lot developments are of high quality. So some of the examples that I pulled were the paving materials, and to pick that option, all houses would need to be, to be, to have a differing paving material, like pavers or stamped concrete. We also have the detached sidewalks, open spacing, or open space facing homes, and then deep-processed garages, so, and that would be required to all homes in the development. And this is, if we go back to that, sorry, going a little fast. Streetscape and connectivity elements are the bulk of what's the additional requirements, and that is because it's requiring a higher quality. Okay, going fast again, sorry. So as far as quality, we, we believe it's providing for a sense of place and improving the curb appeal. And then as far as safety, the elements do require high-quality streetscapes, enhancing public spaces, so ultimately bringing families out into the street, kind of giving that public eyes-on-the-street appeal. So this is an example. We wanted to play with some of the PADs and see, could this PAD have gone through this system without going through an entire PAD process? So for the example of Fulton Homes at Estrella Commons, they requested a variety of lots from fifty, fifty-five, sixties, and seventies. So with a minimum lot width of fifty, it requires one amenity element, two connectivity elements, and two streetscape elements. So we can go through how this would be successful. The first would be the amenity, and the, it is, the item that they could have selected was adjacency to a community amenity, and in this case, it would be the board wash, which they also provided direct pedestrian access to the board wash, so they're utilizing an existing community feature. The next item for connectivity, we could credit Estrella Commons and allow that deviation because it is an infill development. They are located within a growth area as defined by the general plan, and it is located in areas where nearby amenities are already provided, like Walmart, Walgreens, the parks, the school at Centerra Marge, Centerra. And then another connectivity element that they would receive credit for is lot diversity. So seventy percent of the lots that are fifty foot, fifty feet wide, and thirty percent of the lots are sixty feet wide, and you can see that distinction between the two. This actually exceeds the minimum requirement built into our standards, right, or that we're proposing. The proposed update requires at least thirty percent of the lots to exceed the minimum lot width by five feet, so they went five feet and, or fifty foot's the minimum, and the others are sixty, so there's a ten-foot deviation rather than the five-foot. And then streetscape elements, Fulton Homes is providing porches and courtyard, or porches and courtyards on every home, and then they're also utilizing the paving materials. So ultimately, had this text amendment been in place, the rezone of the residential area at least could have been doable and possibly save the customer up to three months. So in addition to the zoning district changes, some minor amendments are being proposed. To start, these, the regulations on these items are not being changed. The proposed updates are simply cleaning up the definitions or adding definitions for further clarification. So for example, assisted living homes and assisted living facilities were not distinguished within the zoning ordinance, so we added a definition for assisted living facility, which we also are proposing deleting adult care facility, which we believe was intended as the assisted living facility. So it is cleaning up that, like, cleaning up the definitions and making it all match. The definition of home business was expanded on in the definitions section, and Article three regulations within, for home businesses were just made clearer and more consistent. So the animals section of the zoning ordinance was not, was very messy, so we did add a definition of animals and distinguish domestic animals, large animals, and small animals, which helped clarify the regulations, which are specific to agriculture and agricultural urban districts. The, so just as an example, in the agricultural urban district, in the existing version, horse corrals were allowed, but nowhere did it say that horses were allowed to be kept at agricultural urban zone property, so there was a lot of inconsistency there. So we believe that this, the update is meeting the intent of the regulations and providing for a lot more clarity and usability. It still does allow agricultural urban communities to regulate animals through their CCNRs. The Development Advisory Forum is made up of developers, the Home Builder Association, and home builders, and we met on September twentieth. We had some great discussion, and we believe we addressed a lot of their concerns while also pressing for good design and quality neighborhoods. All public notices were satisfied. We haven't received any public comment as of yet. We haven't received any public comment as of yet, but we've had a lot of home builder feedback and... So just back as a summary, we have the three new districts, the deletion of the agricultural preservation district, modified R16 minimum, and then there were no substantive changes to multifamily. I think there was one change regarding the open space, but it was, once again, an unclear regulation that we cleaned up and made straightforward and clear. And then, we did update the definitions. The option to pursue a PAD is also still available and will likely still be utilized by developers. But we do feel that this is a more efficient way to get the results we want. One thing I didn't put on any of the slides, we did not touch any of the design standards yet. So as far as three-story homes, there are actually, there are three-story home restrictions multiple in a row. We don't have anything in the regulations that say that. Those are usually required by stipulation. So moving forward, we can still put those stipulations in order where we feel fit. But it's usually depending on the quality, and staff can take a, can evaluate the use of those stipulations when they come about. So that concludes my presentation. And Katie and Christopher and I can answer any questions if you have any. And I hope you like it.
Well done, Alex. Any questions for staff? I think it's a wonderful change and a great proposal. I think it has, it still has to go to council, correct?
Yes, sir.
For final approval?
Yes, sir.
And then, did I understand right, there is, there is in the works to do workshops for home builders or developers to kind of roll out this new product?
We did have a, as part of our public outreach, we hosted during our quarterly development forum back in September, was it? We had input and so forth from the home building community at that time, and have had an ongoing dialogue with the Home Builders Association, as well as some of our stakeholders, such as Newland and others. And we, I think that the fact that the Home Builders Association is not here to speak is a good thing. We worked very diligently, they had very constructive and very constructive comments that we considered and made some revisions based on, not everything, as Alex alluded to, but we really worked hard to address and provide some clarity. Ultimately, the overall goal of this, as Alex highlighted in her presentation, is to create certainty for the development community and provide flexibility so that they're still creative, high-quality neighborhoods. We're not dictating any one particular thing. There's a menu of choices that the development community can select from in order to qualify for the reduced lot size. And then, also, an intentional byproduct of this effort is also to streamline the process, as Alex alluded to, and we discussed previously, and as Mr. Tyke can certainly attest to, PADS are laborious, they can be confusing, and they're these legacy things that live forever that 15 years from now, we're debating on what a word means versus just applying a standard. And so utilizing a straight zoning process as opposed to a PAD eliminates all of that confusion and also speeds up the process from about six months to get a PAD approved to approximately about three for a straight zoning change. So it's, we really envision this as a win-win-win. We're grateful that the development community gave us their input and we were able to incorporate most of it.
Very good. Any other questions? Any comments from the development community? Yes, absolutely. You know the drill, Pete.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Pete Tyke at 5090 North Fortis Street in Phoenix. And what I drove out here tonight for was two reasons. So first, I have to ask, I'll probably go longer than three minutes, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
But I will talk fast.
No, absolutely. We appreciate you coming out.
So I just wanted to kind of go back to about 10 years ago, when I started working more in planning. Goodyear had an ordinance for just 60-foot lots. I shouldn't say just, but minimum 60-foot lots. And when Newland bought into the project, one of the things they've always recognized, being a national developer, is that you really have got to have diversity. One of the things we had recognized right up front was a teacher could not buy a home in Goodyear at that time. And so, we put on a big push to move to smaller lots. That push lasted over two years, just to get to the consideration, to make it a little bit easier step to move towards that. And then, we moved through a PAD amendment. So when Katie and Alex had contacted us, so probably three or four months ago, to your point of has it been vetted, they were awesome. They called and just asked our opinion of what do you think? And then, from there, I just got to see the whole ball start moving forward, making so much more sense. It makes the process easier, which is very timely from our perspective and very cumbersome. And so, as I'm seeing this happen, what I'm getting that feeling for is they're kind of opening that gate. As example, we had a meeting with Lennar on a project that they are considering at Australia. And during that meeting, we started talking about these steps that the planning department has been taking, not only in this arena, but they, I've watched them over the last, say, 12 to 18 months, make numerous changes that have just made the process more simple, more straightforward, more developer-friendly. And so, we had that discussion, and the gentleman that handles all the acquisitions for Lennar just looked at me and said, "I've got to start looking more in Goodyear." That's the difference starting to make. So, and you're talking to a very big builder, that I was just glad to hear it. We also were fortunate that our broker, he got so interested in this, Nate Nathan, that he brought his whole sales team. He thought it was that important, that he has himself two more main salespeople that do most of their deals. When he heard about this, he wanted to have input in it. And he was nice enough to take the time, all three of them, and offer suggestions, kind of explain where the market's going. And he's a very, very busy man. So it just made sense to him. This is a very important issue that makes life easier and more friendly to the builder, to the developer. So what I'm seeing, and my main point about this is the first point of the last 18 months, watching it move this way and appreciating the fact that they're taking the time to do that. And then, also, the fact that they're doing this particularly, which I would support wholeheartedly. We're seeing a, excuse me, a large trend to move anywhere from those 60, 70-foot lots down into, right now, we're down into, say, small lower 40s, 42s, 45s, getting a large demand. So timing's awesome. It's even critical in a manner of speaking, since a lot of developers are heading that way. So I just really did want to mention that to you guys and thank the staff for doing this, for taking the time to do it, and everything else they've done over the last year.
Well, that means quite a bit for you to come out and address this, Pete. One question, just in your opinion, knowing that you were in on the beginning and working with staff to come up with the right, you know, way to do this, do you think that it would be beneficial for staff now to focus on a workshop-type deal for developers and builders to attend, to kind of walk through this now, the finish phase?
Well, I believe they have. You'd have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I attended a meeting with some of the other builders. They went through it pretty detailed, just more detailed than tonight. Made me cringe at a few points, but I'm okay with those darn interconnections and a tree here and there. Katie's going to make me do it. But it really did, as a whole, you get the principle. That's the nice part is, the great thing about it from the meeting that I got was it was well thought through. It didn't just say, "Go do this." It said, you know, "We want to do this, but if you want to get to here, you've got to give something back." I think it's a very fair thing to do, so I think they took the time. It was explained well, and I think we're probably in there well over an hour, if I recall right. So I do believe it, at least from my perspective, it's been properly put out there. I can't speak for the whole public. How it's supposed to happen, those guys always do that right anyways, so I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you, Pete. Appreciate it. Any questions for Pete? Very good. I think it does speak volumes that you do have a large developer that came down here to speak in favor tonight on behalf of all the work you've done. And clearly, I think it's headed in the right direction, otherwise we would have had those home builders here letting us know their opinion. So very well done. And with that, if there's no other speakers cards, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion on the zoning ordinance text amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 172200006.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Walters to approve the zoning ordinance text amendment. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. At this point in time, we'll go into 8.6. This is the December 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting date changes. I think they sent out an, did you send out an email on this one? Possibly. Did I see an email? They just want approval to move the December meeting date change to December 6 at 6:00 PM, so that would be the first week. Is that correct? Is there any issues with that? If not, I'll take a motion on that, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move the December meeting to the 6th. Or, I'm sorry, is it the 5th?
6th.
6th.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Walters to move the December meeting to December 6. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.7 is the 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dates. They are right, they have been provided to you in your packet. You notice they are highlighted in purple. And with that, if you'll take a look at that, I would like a motion to approve the 2018 calendar, please.
Chair?
Yes.
If I may, can I just, I wanted to point out a couple of the things on the calendar?
If, yes.
Just so everyone was aware, basically, except for the couple I'm going to explain, every meeting is the second Wednesday of the month as normal. In July and August, city council takes a break, and so they move the July and August meetings so that they can take a break, so they can go on vacations. And because of that, it makes the July meeting kind of ineffective, because whether you went to the July meeting or the August meeting, you'd end up at the same city council meeting. So, and then, if we moved it up a week, that's July 4th holiday. So we have on there a tentative second June meeting. Basically, we're going to try and work with our customers as we get closer to make the June meeting. But just in case there are some of those projects where, man, I have to wait all the way to August, we kind of have that second June meeting tag. So that's a, we won't use it unless we have to, kind of thing. So that's one change. And then, the other change is similar to the December, because of the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays, the council meetings moved. So the November and December meetings would be the first Wednesday of the month. And then, you have this calendar in front of you, so this was something Heather put together. Council has been putting these calendars together. So it's like, hey, why don't we do that too, so that you guys know the schedule for the whole year and communicate better and have this little calendar you can tape on your fridges? So we hope you appreciate the calendar.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate it. Thank you, Heather, for putting this together. I'll take a motion for the calendar.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2018 commission and council meeting calendar.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Barnes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Staff communication.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of updates for you, as we normally do, on the results of the cases that you recommended approval to, or made recommendations to, I should say, in regards to the city council. On October 23rd, the council considered the Hudson Commons final plat, which, if you remember Hudson Commons, which is the same property that you discussed this evening, that final plat was to break up that large parcel into, I believe, four smaller parcels that could be sold off. The council did approve that. Australia 9.1, a new neighborhood in Australia down off of, on South Australia, I should say, was also recommended for approval by you all and was approved by council on October 23rd. The Australia Commons PAD amendment for the single-story multifamily concept adjacent to, right off of Van Buren, right by the daycare center, that you all recommended approval to the council. They, council also approved that as well. And then, also, the Fulton Homes project that Alex used as an example in her presentation tonight, that plat was also approved by the council as well. So we have, we're batting a thousand, so that's good. Also, just like to shout out to Katie and all the planning staff for their hard work in terms of many things that we're doing. I think you heard a customer testimonial tonight, obviously, which is a great credit to the work that the entire team does. But also like to put Katie on the spot, and she can talk about the session that she spearheaded at the recent Arizona APA conference that highlighted the achievements that Goodyear has been making.
Thank you, Christopher. So we recently had our state planning conference. It was located in Fountain Hills this year, and we went ahead and did a presentation on the improvements we've been making to our processes. We had, what, 75 people in the room? It was standing room only. So lots of people were interested in this topic. And we gave a presentation on all the improvements we've been doing, a little bit of, hey, there's this lean, what we're doing. And it was really great, because we presented pretty early on in the conference. And the rest of the conference, I had people coming up to me who were really impressed with what we're doing in Goodyear, especially a lot of people on the more development private side, who were like, hey, it's nice to see a city doing this. This is really great. And there was even some people in their former lives have done some of this lean stuff in manufacturing even, and they were just like, wow, I didn't know cities were doing this kind of thing. It didn't occur to me that, you know, government entities could do this. So we were the talk of the conference. So it was really, really exciting, and it was, in no small part too, to all of your support as well. So we really thank you guys and your supporting us and sending articles along too. Some of you guys do that, that's always, and I know I don't always respond quickly, but we always appreciate ideas and thoughts from you as well.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, guys. You guys are definitely to be commended. That is good to hear and good to see. So with that, meeting adjourned.